But they still go down to the two lanes.
Yeah, they keep one in each direction, so it slows things down a little bit in the late afternoon.
Yeah.
It usually does.
And the eighties, I'm sure is.
Yeah, but we'll see as it progresses.
Yeah.
And Butch, one more thing. I know you inherited this. It was there for a long time, but and I haven't been downtown Bond Road. I think it's great that you were able to get rid of a lot of stuff, but at town meeting, I did think that resident had, you know, kind of a legitimate gripe when he said that, you know, for him, it's embarrassing when they're going to the Little League fields and the softball fields are actually, is it softball?
Softball.
Yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of DPW things all along that road. And I just wondered if have has that been cleaned up? I mean, we've kind of really sprawled out in terms of, you know, can we like kind of contain it a little bit more because that road is.
Well, I think he was talking toward down towards where they park because there used to be about 7,000 yards of wood chips.
Right, remember that?
We got that all out of there.
Oh, you did?
And then we had some piles there over the winter because last fall because they weren't playing. So we kind of used the area a little bit while they were weren't playing because everything was shut down for COVID.
Yeah.
Since moved everything out of there.
Oh, you did?
So they have that whole area to park.
Okay, what about, okay, what about the old plows and stuff that used to be there that kind of?
We've gotten rid of a lot of it.
You've got rid of it all? Okay.
Anything that we're not using, we've gotten rid of.
You did? Okay, that's good.
Much, much more cleaned up. We can consolidate maybe some of the structures on both sides of the road. But for the most part, down where they are, it's wide open now, so they have much more parking.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, anything else from anyone? Okay, thanks, Butch.
Okay.
Okay, next we have water and sewage shame. Okay, good evening.
Good evening, how you doing?
Good.
You have the operation reports for both April and May. The last time I was before you, I told you I would give you an update on septicage revenue, and that's in the May report, and I'll take any questions you might have on that.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Shane, I just noticed on the May report, on page 65, when you give the wastewater treatment facility data, it says April, it should be May.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there was a typo on my part.
Because it's the same numbers as the April report.
Yeah, I'll update that when we submit. I'm sorry, what page again?
Uh, 65.
Well, you don't have that one. It's, uh, this is the May report.
Yep.
It looks like these numbers are the same as April.
Right, because that's, yeah, let me, I'll look at it and resubmit if there's a mistake. But the flows are like we anticipated, so, you know, with the businesses opening and the park opening, and some of that's due to flushing too, but I'll go back and revisit those numbers for you.
This April flow data reflects a 3.5%.
Okay, so on the wastewater side, yeah.
It's on the wastewater side.
I'll fix that and resubmit.
Yeah, okay.
All right. The new pump station is done. Bacteria tests have been passed. The VOC testing is done. The engineers sent the stuff that they need to send to DEP today. The DEP did their inspection last week. I'm hoping to have the okay tomorrow to turn that on, and we'll activate that tomorrow. We'll run it for a couple of weeks and then we'll deactivate the other one, so that project will be wrapping up soon. The last time I was here, you asked me to get an update on well one cleanup when they thought that was going to finish. I asked last week. They anticipate that being done in the next couple of weeks. So they, as far as I know, most of it has been removed, treated, and they're getting ready to backfill it soon. So that's good news. And then it's just business as usual at the plants. Both, all the plants are running well. The Hammond Brook study's still going on when McLaurin engineering, so we can hopefully get that stream limit removed. But I have a feeling that we'll have to do another year of this study, which will probably cost another $15,000. But if you can get the limit removed and you can run the well all summer long, that's advantageous for the town. Water ban, probably back in that by the end of the week unless we get some rain, and then we'll put the signs up. And that's pretty much all I have for you this evening.
Okay, Shane, on the monies generated from the septicage, is that about average?
Yeah, I think, and that's for the first five months. I think last year, when it was all said and done, $20,000 went back to the fund after paying for sludge hauling, so we're pretty much on target.
Okay, anyone else here?
I'm going to follow up with that because that was my question too. I know we increased our, the cost.
Correct.
For taking in, and I think it was, everybody agreed, but I think it was former select person Mike Supernaz urging.
It was.
Did we end up losing anybody as a result of that?
No, because the other towns all went up the same.
Right, I was just wasn't sure, but so everybody's.
No, it's still, yeah.
So we're ahead of the game by increasing.
Exactly.
All right, and I just want to give you a shout out. I don't think anyone's done it in a while, but for people watching, I think your safety is pretty amazing because it says no lost time accidents during the month, and our staff has worked 32 years and five months with one lost time accident. So I just wanted to say that that's.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Extremely good, 32 years.
We have training every month, and it's something we preach every day. You know, you'll see my guys, most of the time they have hot hats, glasses on, gloves, and if they don't, they hear about it. So that's really important to us, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, we'd certainly notice if we had safety problems, so I just wanted to point out that it doesn't go unnoticed.
You know, that's appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, so nothing else for Shane?
Nothing else.
Anything else from the board?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Shane, we have town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report's in your packet. If you have any questions on those items, please let me know. Also on the podium this evening is a memo with some additional agenda items that I apologize for blocking in this evening, but they're timely. If you can consider those later in the evening. If you have any questions on my report, please let me know.
Okay, is there any questions or comments on this report?
I just have, I guess I was going to bring it up onto old business, but since it's an item, I'll bring it up here. Says telephone pole banners for OSV. I think that's great that we're going to be putting banners. And I know you had said, you know, do, can we work with OSV for their 75th, do something combined? And then we had suggested maybe Terry could come with a few ideas. And I'm wondering, is he, is he working on that? Have we met with?
Oh, yeah, we've been in communication with Chris Tieri, who's their marketing person at OSV, so we're working on that.
Okay, and going to come forward to the board because?
At some point, yeah.
Okay, because it'd be good to have something by the fall, right? It's this year, that's 75 years.
Yes, and we're kind of working on their timeframe.
Okay.
OSV's timeframe.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Now we have several action items. First is consideration, possible action and confirmation of the position of Sergeant Larry Bateman to the position of Lieutenant with the Sturbridge Police Department. Chief?
Good evening. Before I bring Sergeant Bateman on, I just wanted to thank the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for supporting the second lieutenant's position. If it wasn't for your support, we wouldn't be making these promotions tonight, so thank you for that. And I'll bring Sergeant Bateman up. Sergeant Bateman's been a member of the Sturbridge Police Department now for 17 years, serving as sergeant for the last six.
Stand right here so you're on camera.
My, I didn't know, I didn't know we were going to get one.
A valued employee. He currently has his bachelor's degree in public administration, and he's in school right now, obtaining his master's degree. And back in March, we had an outside company come in, Public Safety Consultants LLC, and they, they did an assessment center for the sergeants and the lieutenants. It was a very extensive process, and as a result, I bring you tonight Sergeant Bateman requesting that he be promoted to lieutenant, and he will be assigned as the operations commander of the police department.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I would move Madam Chair to appoint Sergeant Larry Bateman to the position of lieutenant with the Sturbridge Police Department.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, votes are out.
Congratulations. Lieutenant Bateman is going to be pinned by his daughter Millie with his new lieutenant's badge.
No one's taking a picture of them? Right? Oh, you are? Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next person I'm bringing up front to you is Officer David Fortier. V2 is a 17-year member of the police department. He's been working in patrol the whole time. He's a very experienced police officer. He's served in different capacities. He's a motor officer, SWAT, SWAT team member for the Central Mass Law Enforcement Council. He currently has his associate's degree in criminal justice, and he is going back to school in the fall to obtain his bachelor's degree as well. And I'm bringing him forward, recommending that he be appointed to patrol supervisor sergeant this evening at a hourly rate of 3502 per hour.
Okay, questions from the board? Somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Officer David Fortier to the position of sergeant with the Sturbridge Police Department effective June 22, 2021, with a wage of 3502 per hour.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Sergeant Fortier is going to be pinned by his wife, Christine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chase.
Thank you.
Now we lose half the audience.
Still a big audience.
Yeah.
Better, we're getting rated.
Relaxing. Okay, next on the agenda, we have closeout of the earth removal permits for the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. Jeff, you want to address this first?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Hamilton Rod and Gun Club received an earth removal permit back in 2008, I believe, and it has been amended and processed since then. Most recently, there was an amendment to the special permit in 2016. They went through a process with the Conservation Commission to clean up some of the areas, and based upon that and the closeout and their own engineer and the gun club review of the, of the work, we're recommending closeout of the earth removal permit, and there's various communications and documentation that support that, that recommendation.
Okay, did anyone from Hamilton Rod and Gun Club want to say anything, or are you basically here for the one day?
I sent the letter, I'm going to write it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Some, anyone on the board have a question or comment? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the closeout of the special permits for earth removal for the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, next we have consideration on a special one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. And someone would like to speak on that?
So.
Come on up and get your microphone there.
We actually put in three one-day permit applications for three different events.
Yep.
Milltown is the first one, which is the car show, which we've had probably for a good 10 years, except for last year, naturally. So they're back, and we just wanted to move forward with that. And I think it's been signed off already by the police chief, as I talked to him the other day.
All three are on the request for this evening.
Right. Yeah, the first one is for the.
For the car show, correct.
August 6th and 7th, 2:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Yeah, it runs from Friday to Saturday night, closes at midnight on Saturday. And of course, both nights it closes at midnight, but, yeah, it runs both days. And then we have the 100th anniversary this year. I don't know if that's on there.
Oh, and I think your hours.
He gave me the letter that I was going to read under correspondence.
Okay, the hours, I think, should read 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Saturday. It's not ending at 1:00 in the afternoon, right?
Correct, it's AM, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is it still considered a one-day permit if we're having a two-day?
It's, it's a two-day.
You got two separate permits, yep.
Yes, you have two separate permits.
And you're allowed up to 30 one-day permits per year? No one's ever.
No one's ever given 30.
I mean, you may as well have a full license. Not that many. I mean, you do want your club in your pavilion. This is outside.
Yeah, we, I mean, and I'm not sure if someone at the club brought up that we originally had, our license didn't allow us to do outdoor previously, and I don't know if that's true or not. So that would be something we could discuss in the future if we could make our club license including grounds, right? And then we wouldn't have to come in every time.
When applications are due at the end.
When we renew? Okay, perfect.
Change of premises, yeah.
Yeah, we adjust it for the beginning of the year.
Yeah, we can do that at the end of the year. That was my thought process, so that we wouldn't have to come back for the few events.
Let's take these one at a time.
Okay.
Who wants to make a motion on the car show?
I'll make a.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for the car show on August 6, 2021, and August 7, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Five, zero, one. Okay, the next one is the.
100th anniversary?
The 100th anniversary on, excuse me, September 18th, 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Any questions on that one?
Congratulations on 100 years.
Hey, I've only been there eight.
You've only been there eight? I thought you said, no, never mind.
The club's been there 100, but I've only been there eight. I don't look that old, do I?
Do you guys have anything special planned for the 100th?
Yeah, we got a, we were inviting all of the members, which is, what, 7,650, Kevin?
Wow.
And, and so it's a big event for the, for the club members and their families at no cost. We're going to invite some dignitaries. I'm not sure who and how yet, but letters will go out shortly and they come and speak and do what we need to do.
Yeah, Kevin, would you like me to read this one now?
Sure.
Okay, this is to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. Hamilton Rod and Gun Club is celebrating our 100th birthday on Saturday, September 18, 2021. We would like to extend an invitation to any and all members of your board and their guests that would like to attend our celebration. Festivities will begin at 3:00 p.m. with the steak dinner being served between 6:30 to 7:30. Please RSVP to Kevin Soucy. Is that how you say your last name, Kevin?
Yes, Soucy.
At racing69@aal.com. Thank you, everyone, and looking forward to seeing you. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion then on 100th anniversary? One-day liquor license?
Look at, Jase, you did it so well last night.
I was trying to make it easy for Alex, but the same person just keeps doing it.
I'll make the motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for the 100th anniversary on 9/18/2021 from 3:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
And I will second it, Madam Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor? Again, four, zero, one. Okay, the next one is for the Food Truck Festival, October 9. Any questions from the board? Sounds good. Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for the Food Truck Festival on 10/9/21.
From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
That's why we're all here. Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor?
How many trucks are you going to have? Do you know?
Kevin, do you have any idea yet?
I don't have a ton of trucks as of yet.
That's a good event, too. People like food trucks.
Yeah, supposedly. It's, you know, the food, there's a gentleman that organizes it that gets all the food trucks there, so we're essentially hosting him, but he's bringing in all the trucks. We haven't got a final count yet, but it does sound like it's going to be a good number. And then hopefully, hopefully people show up and go through the problem.
I'm sure people will.
Great.
Okay, that vote was four, zero, one. Okay, you're all set. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Does anyone want to check?
Oh, that goes. We don't want to look like we're getting bribes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next we have consideration and action on the purchase of a supervisory control and data acquisition system for the Fiskill water pump station. Which, Shane, or something in the water?
So basically, this is basically the computer that runs the, the system up there, and it reports.
Up where?
Up on Fiskill, the new booster station. Thank you. And whenever there's an alarm condition or a power failure, it notifies the main computer, and then that calls the person on call. Basically, what happened was we asked the engineer to carry $15,000 to cover this, and they didn't. And that work's been done, so now we need to pay the bill.
Okay, questions from the board?
Can I just add, we still have, with everything paid, the whole project is still at over $60,000. It's listed as paid.
Okay.
You don't have to go to FinCom for this? We can just authorize.
It's in the capital budget.
Oh, it's in the capital budget.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make the motion to authorize the purchase of the SCADA system for Fiskill Water Pump Station for a cost of $14,695.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Yeah, have a good night.
Okay, now we have a consideration on the authorization for the chairman to sign a departmental protection. 319 Nonpoint Source Pollution Grant Program. Application for alum treatment for Quasipond, also known as South Pond.
Okay, it's easier to say for me.
Yes.
There's Mr. Nielsen. He's representing.
Hi, how are you? Carl Nielsen.
Not, not to be picky, sir, but would you mind removing your cap?
Oh, I'm going to look like. I went whitewater rafting earlier today, and I had to come straight from there to here, so.
Doesn't look any better up here, but I'm an old-fashioned girl. Okay, you want to explain?
So we filed, you might remember doing this paperwork last year. We, we filed and were unsuccessful in receiving the grant. We got some feedback from the state regarding things that we could do to improve our chances, and we've taken that into consideration as we pulled this grant together. But essentially, it's the same set of paperwork, and it's money that was previously committed to.
Right, and it's still available.
And so that's all, the state just suggested we submit it again and try again and see if we can do better. So here we are.
Okay, and Brookfield didn't appropriate anywhere?
This year, that was one of the things that improved. Brookfield and East Brookfield both put in money, so the number or the total value of the, the grant application has increased because we have more matching funds, plus we have more money from the state as a result of that increase. So it'll be an overall better project, to be honest, and if we get the money, obviously, if we can get the grant, it'll, it'll be very, it'll be a nice solution.
One of them put money in.
Pardon?
I didn't see where one of them put money in.
They both have. I have letters of commitment from Brookfield, East Brookfield, the Frankaday Y Camp, as well as QQLA themselves. So.
That's good.
Yeah, I forget which. Brookfield put in 25, I believe. East Brookfield 15. Frankaday was 5,000, and QQLA, I think, is committing 40,000.
Now, this is, so did the town of Brookfield.
This year.
Provide matching, but organizations, it says appears from the grant documents that Brookfield has not provided matching funds, but organizations have.
He's.
But you're correct, but it's different. Oh, okay.
We're redoing it.
This is wrong.
That was, yeah, that was.
Be full.
Last times.
Okay. Now, the fact that we have two other towns, does that, borrowing the money, does that increase the chances of getting a grant?
Certainly does.
Because more towns are committed to it?
Yep.
That would be good.
It certainly helps, and, you know, I won't say it's political, but there is politics involved in it. You know, if there's three towns asking for money from the state, it has a little more weight than if just one town were, were seeking that funding.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the board? Mary?
Is the phosphorus getting worse, or is it stayed about the same?
It, it's getting incrementally worse every year, so.
Yeah.
The sooner we can get something done in the lake, the, the better. This, this whole problem is a result of internal phosphorus recycling, so the sediment is full of phosphorus, and that gets circulated up every year, and the alum treatment stops that process. So, you know, that's the beauty of the, the treatment.
Right.
But incrementally, every year, more phosphorus comes in, creates algae, and that settles down to the sediment in the fall when the algae die. So it gets incrementally worse every year, so we're hoping to put an end to that. And, and this treatment will last 15 to 20 years, so it'll be a, a good, a good effect.
Oh, no, that's good. Now, with phosph, to swim where there's a lot of phosphorus, is that like a health risk?
It's not harmful to you. It just, if there's too much phosphorus, you get algae blooms, and the algae blooms can be harmful to you. They become toxic if they get too thick. That's not a problem here at the lake, and that's one of the pitches, I guess, on our grant, is to try to stop that process from happening and getting to the point where the lake's being shut down.
Right.
Like, if you hear on the radio, Indian Lake gets shut down all summer long because of algae blooms that basically they, they stop people from being able to go to the lake because it's toxic. And so if, if you treat the lake now before it gets to that position, you know, you're actually keeping the lake nice, which is what we want to do. And the state, you know, obviously, has to go after, if, if lakes are already being shut down, they sort of rank a little higher in priority than lakes that are still clean, but they recognize the value of stopping a good lake from becoming a bad lake, I guess. And so that's where we are now, is we don't want, we don't want it to get to the point where it's shutting down.
Oh, no, not.
All summer long because of algae blooms. It's much better to be proactive and take care of the problem now.
Do they just check once at the beginning of the season, or do they check a few times during the course of the summer?
QQLA?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they check, they monitor it once a year themselves, and then the, the town of Sturbridge actually sends people out to monitor it, and I'm not sure of the frequency. I know it's at least once per year.
And is that through our Board of Health?
I think it's the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I'm not sure who, what board.
Okay, I was just curious about, I'll look.
But they do it, they do it as well on all the lakes in Sturbridge.
No, I know, we've been fortunate, our lakes have stayed open, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
But this lake hasn't, it, it's not in, it's not being threatened to the point where it's going to shut down.
Right.
It's a safe, nice lake to swim in. We just want to keep it that way.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the submission of the Department of Environmental Protection 319 grant for the alum treatment on South Pond.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Sorry.
Wonderful.
And you have paperwork, it's a final draft, we have it, and then we need a letter of support, which will get to you.
Okay, so get, send it to you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, okay, next we have consideration for use of funds from the Wetland Protection Fund for the Conservation Department. We have done this previously. I've got a letter from Rebecca on behalf of the Sturbridge Conservation Commission. I would like to request the appropriation of funds from the Wetland Protection Fund, Chapter 40, Paragraph 218 of the Acts of 1997, amending General R. Chapter 131, Paragraph 40, in the amount of $5,544 for the purpose of funding a portion of the salary of the Conservation Department's administrative assistant position for the fiscal year 2022. At the June 15, 2020, Sturbridge Conservation Commission meeting. 2020, Sturbridge Conservation Commission meeting, the board voted five to zero to approve the use of $5,544 from the fund. Per Mass General Law, the Board of Selectmen are required to additionally approve the use of these funds. Wetland Protection Funds are permitted for uses related to the administration of the Wetland Protection Act. We respectfully request the board's continued support by approving the continued use of these funds in the amount of $5,544 for fiscal year 22. Anybody have any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize $5,544 from the Wetland Protection Fund for the Conservation Department for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero. Next, we have consideration on a dock permit for 285 Clark Road Extension. We have a sketch of the dock, a memorandum from Rebecca Gendron. Anyone have any question on it?
The property owner sharing this evening, answer any questions.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm John Mastriani. We've had, we've had this dock on a beach right since, well, for 47 years that we've owned our cottage, and it's been there over 50 years. We never realized that a permit was necessary.
No, most people don't.
No, so, so we're here to request, request a permit.
Okay, anyone have a question?
How was it brought to your attention that you needed it, just out of curiosity?
It was just somebody in the neighborhood.
Let you know, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other? Okay, someone want to make a motion then to approve the existing dock?
I'll make the motion to approve the existing dock at 285 Clark Road Extension.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a draw, it got the job done.
That's right. Have a great night.
Engineering.
Enjoy your summer.
Okay, next, we have consideration and possible action for a transient business license for Collins Gift. Would you like to come down and explain it, please? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Wendy. Basically, for at least the last 10 years, I've been promoting doll and bear shows down at the Sturbridge Host Hotel. So, I think, started out with one a year, moved up to two a year, and we're also going to do an artisan show there this year.
Now, are you the only show there at this particular time?
Yes.
Okay, because I do know there's one big event that somebody usually applies for vendor license for everybody, but...
That's what I do.
Any questions from the board?
Is this the first time that you're applying for the transient, or do...
No, every year.
Oh, I knew, but I didn't know if you were the same situation as the people that just left, that you didn't know that you come and get a transient.
No, I can fill out the permit, show my promoter's license, pay for the $10 for each of the vendors, and then get my sign permit, and have for about 10 years.
Okay, anything else from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve Collins Gift Transit Vendor Application.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, all set?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good luck with that.
Good luck at your event.
Thank you. Because I think, what is it, 39 vendors? Okay, next, we have a consideration on Hocker and Peddler License for Dennis Walsh.
But he's online.
Hello there. I am.
Okay.
Thank you for the invitation. We wanted to join you tonight in case you have any questions. This is our ninth year.
Now, we've been getting questions on, when is the stand going to open?
We're just waiting on the sweet corn. If I had to say tonight, it will either be Friday, the 2nd of July, or Saturday, the 3rd of July.
Okay, sounds good. Hadley Corn, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Yes, I will move to approve the application of Dennis Walsh for a Hocker and Peddler License.
I'll second the motion.
You should put in at the...
Location?
Empire Village Parking Lot, Route 20.
At the Empire Village Parking Lot on Route 20.
It is the best corn I've had, I have to say.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I will still second.
Any discussion?
I have, I had one, I did have one question. Will you drop this in the mail for us, or should I go over and pick it up at Town Hall?
We'll drop it in the mail.
Okay, that's terrific. Hope to see you all this summer.
Thank you, and have a good season. Okay, next.
We have to vote on?
Oh, we didn't vote.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's...
It's only 7:30. Okay, all those in favor? Five to nothing. Okay, next, we have a request for the...
Did you guys have a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Our residence, it says 285 Clark Road Extension. Our dock is on our beach right, which is 288.
And a half.
And a half.
So is that a...
I just, you know, when we were rolling out, it was...
Well, we can pin it in. It's not a problem that it's beach rights instead of your property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody should be so conscientious. Okay, next, we have consideration...
Did you vote?
Yes.
Five oh, five oh. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration on a Hocker and Peddler License for Michael Sutherland of Sunrun.
Nobody's here.
Yes, that's not Michael.
Nope. Do we have, there's no one else on the line either? Alex, you know anything about Mr. Sutherland?
What?
Okay, we got overheated.
Well, I just had a question. Where it says brief description of activity, it doesn't have anything. In the location, it's a residential neighborhood.
Do you know what he's, what he's selling?
Is it considered a residential, right?
Sorry.
Maybe it sounds like... Solar project.
You know what Mr. Sutherland's selling?
Of Sunrun, sounds like a solar.
It's solar, so I think...
Sounds like solar.
Yeah, door-to-door solar?
Yeah.
That's what I would imagine, but I would prefer the description, I mean, because it isn't a residential neighborhood. I mean, if he's doing a business in his house, I don't believe he needs a Hocker and Peddler, he just needs a business license.
Going to neighborhood, yeah, I think we should table...
It doesn't say.
Is it zoned for this? Can we...
Well, I think this is like a door-to-door solicitor's permit.
Yeah.
That's really what this is.
Is this the right permit for that? Is there another permit for that?
It's the one we have.
Yeah, I prefer for you, tell us what he's doing.
We'll get him to fill it out?
Yeah.
Checks for it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Who knows, he could have solar panels on his front lawn.
So is that technically tabled?
Yeah, yes, hold it till they get the information. Next, we have consideration on a common victual license for Subway, Cinnabon, and Auntie Anne located at Pilot Travel Center. Good evening.
Well, hey, good evening. First of all, I wanted to say thank you. I am not only a brand-new Travel Center General Manager at that pilot, I'm also new to New England, so I am, I'm about, yeah, thank you. It's been very welcoming, so I appreciate the opportunity to come down here and present. You have our sincerest apologies. Auntie Anne, Cinnabon, and Subway are all new concepts inside what was an old facility. Since we rehashed, my guess is my conversation with our corporates has just slipped their minds. We've already had the discussion to make sure that the proper payment came to you guys.
Because they were already open.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I thought. I looked at this and I was like, wait, I...
Trucking along.
Yeah, but we've had other places open and then find out they need a common victual license. Any questions from the board? Questions? Somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to grant the common victual license for the premises located at 40 Haynes Street, Subway, Cinnabon, and Auntie Anne's.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero. Okay, good luck.
Pleasure meeting you all.
How's it been, how's it been going down there?
Way better than expected.
Well, that's good.
Yes, that's, that's a, that's a positive. The good news, the really good news is, is that we need to staff more, which is more people employed. The really even better news is, is we're actually getting there. Our original estimates were much softer than what's actually happening, so that's, that's the good news. The only, the only hard news to that is, is controlling the madness. But, but other than that, we're, we're coming along. We're putting our pieces together, we're settling in, and, and we're operating. The traffic cleaned up, cleaned the traffic up, you know, getting the trucks in a lot better than what was before. We are staying diligent with the new parking signs, but...
They're still occasionally parking. I run on that route, I run on that route. What's that?
They occasionally just...
Oh, I know.
Knock them down.
Yeah.
I've seen, I've seen a couple unfortunate things, and when they're driving a semi, and it's 3 o'clock in the morning and they're sliding in, and they have no place to sleep, no place to go. There does come a point when they just throw in the towel, and whatever's in their way gets knocked out of the way. So we're doing our best to control that. It's gonna, it's just gonna be one of those things like cleaning a restroom, you're never gonna stop.
We should probably keep it, we should probably put, you know, patrol, and I know we do, but, because it got better for a while, and then I noticed it started to happen again.
It's, it slipped, it slipped for a little bit. We put up the new parking signs, it slipped for a little bit, and we went and got them back up, and it's much more in control. What I've been told, because like I said, I am still new, I haven't even passed my 90-day mark, but the historical has been told to me that probably about every four months, we have to put the signs up again. So, you know, we're looking somewhere around, you know, once a quarter. We gotta, we gotta rebuild and start over.
And not everybody thinks no parking means them.
Oh, that's very true.
Means the other person.
There's no other places to eat, right? Just Subway, Cinnabon, and Auntie Anne?
We have PJ Fresh, but that was a part of the original concept.
Okay.
So that's essentially, to, to, to most people, it's just a deli, but it's, it's really just the name of the deli inside the facility, which functions into the operation to the actual travel center itself. The three other facilities, Auntie Anne, Cinnabon's, and Subway, were all added to the facility. Those are brand-new concepts that were just introduced.
So you didn't need it for the other one, it was already grandfathered?
Which is, whoops, yeah.
All right.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me. It was a pleasure meeting you all.
You too.
Hope you like New England in January.
Wait for the winter, yeah.
I actually came up here on the 15th of March, and, and of course, COVID was still in, due to the COVID. My first trip was to Boston, I was like, this isn't that bad.
Just wait.
I was like, okay. So just right now, honestly, it feels like, it feels like Tennessee up here.
Yeah.
It's a heat wave.
Trees, gorgeous. But that's what everybody keeps saying.
Soak it in.
But the good thing, it changes.
Yeah. I like changes. I don't know if I liked when they told me, they said three feet can drop in three hours. I was like, I don't know if I like that.
You need, you need to take up skiing.
Yeah, we are, actually. We noticed the ski ramps. I'm from, I'm from Ohio, so it's pretty flat where we're at, because we're north of Ohio, like Michigan area, so we definitely had no skiing. So my family's looking to take up skiing this year and kind of give it a shot, but what else do you do in January, right?
Read.
Nice.
Once again, pleasure meeting you all. I wanted to come down here so you could at least introduce myself and question, so thank you for having me.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Pleasure, pleasure meeting you. Thanks again, guys.
You too.
Can you ask about these? Okay, next, we have consideration on action on fuel vendor contracts.
Good evening, Robin. Hello, nice to finally meet some of you in person. Oh, yes, time. I'm Robin, I'm the Facilities Coordinator. So, a bunch of items tonight in order are our annual selections for vendors. Each year, we procure fuel vendor contracts for the four types of fuels that we acquire: diesel for the vehicles, unleaded gas, heating oil for the boilers, and propane for a couple of our rooftop units, and other heating sources. So, this year, we went out with CMRPC, regional procurement. They had to do two rounds this year. The first round came in really high when everything was in a panic about a month ago, so they rebid, and they did a new thing this year where they accepted a base price plus per gallon. The base price is based to the New York Merchantile Exchange on the day of delivery, and then each vendor adds whatever their price per gallon is. So, we've reviewed all the procurements that came in for diesel and unleaded through that procurement, and we recommend that we accept and contract with Dennis K. Burke for both sources of fuel for this coming year. They were the best price, and they were willing to come to Sturbridge. The other two vendors for heating oil and propane, nobody through the CMRPC bid was coming to Sturbridge. They have a choice on their bid to select the towns, nobody wanted to come here, so we got some additional quotes of people who have been our vendors in the past. Worked out that American Discount Oil came in just slightly under, at $2.33 per gallon for oil at a fixed price for the year, and propane at $1.589 per gallon for the year. So we also recommend that we contract with American Discount Oil for the heating oil and propane for this year, fiscal '22.
Okay, questions? Comments?
Does that always happen? Did that happen last year with the CMRPC that they didn't come in with heating oil and propane?
Almost. Last year, one vendor came in for heating oil, and it was Peterson Oil, and I did not want to accept them for the town building, so we procured our own after that procurement. And we did have American Discount Oil, they were our vendor this year for, for heating oil, so they'll...
Were we dissatisfied?
Statewide, they had an issue.
Yeah, they were under investigation with the Attorney General and some other things that were additives in their fuel, that were affecting the heating equipment.
I recall that, yeah, okay.
I wasn't excited to bring that in. I didn't want to replace the boilers yet.
Good looking out.
Okay, anything else from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make the motion to accept the recommended bids for fuel products for fiscal year 2022 and authorize the Chairwoman to sign the contracts.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, zero. Okay, next, we have a fire alarm contract. Robin?
Yes, so last year, we entered into what I'll consider a master contract for fire protection services with Johnson Controls Fire Protection Services. At that time, we were able to enter in Town Hall, Center Office, and the library under contract. We had to wait for the fiscal year and the other contracts to end that were on the other buildings with additional vendors. So at this time, we'd like to amend that contract to add the Public Safety Complex and the DPW, so that we centralized our fire protection, fire alarm, and spring safety complex and the DPW, so that we centralized our fire protection, fire alarm, and sprinkler services under one vendor. The total contract for the year was $5,506, and this amendment will add $2,653 for the year, for a total of $8,159 this year and also next year. It's a fixed price for the next two years.
Yeah, you said $8,159?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Do, do we see any savings by going to them for everything? Are they, are they giving us a better price for more business?
They, they are giving us a better price. They, they've matched some of the other prices as well, so that we can centralize. For, for my perspective, the easiest part right now is that, up until now, when there was an issue with the fire alarm, the fire department wasn't sure which vendor was at which site. Under this contract, right now, if a fire alarm goes off and the fire department is dispatched, and I'm traveling, when we get to travel again, or something and unavailable, they automatically know it's Johnson Controls. And so that level of cohesiveness from building to building. We are under, we are under a fixed rate, so I have all the rates for the same buildings. I'm not paying different vendors different prices for the same work as well.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense. But did, did they match, or did they improve from bundling? Because I know with insurance companies, if you bundle your house and your car and everything, they give you a better price.
Yeah, originally, they did improve.
They did.
Yep. And then in three years, we'll do this again, and we'll bid everything else. And it's a three-year contract, so we'll make them compete every couple of years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anyone want to make a motion then?
What was the total amount? Eight thousand one hundred fifteen? I can just delineate it if it makes-
The motion is in the packet.
Yeah, I, I move to approve amendment number one, Johnson's Controls for Fire Alarm and Fire Suppression Services Contract, include the public safety buildings in the amount of $1,633.0. The senior center in the amount of $600, and the Department of Public Works in the amount of $420.0, and authorize the chair woman to sign the amendment.
Yeah, that's the total, $2,653 on that?
Yes.
Because the other would have-
Gotcha. That makes sense.
Okay. And I don't mind being called chairman.
Oh, okay.
Whatever you want.
Every town goes through this. Select person, select board, what is it?
Chair Mary.
Hey, you. Okay, is there a second to Jamie's motion?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, nothing. Okay, next we have consideration on action of an amendment to Burgess Pest Control Contract to add animal control building in North Cemetery Building.
So also, this is another contract that we entered into in fiscal twenty-one with Burgess Pest Management to centralize our pest control services. This was a procurement that we did competitively bid at that time. We did not, for the fiscal year twenty-one in the budgets, carry animal, animal control building or the North Cemetery Building for pest control services, and I'm recommending adding those services at those locations. They were in the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and were approved at town meeting. The amendment would be for a total of $520 this year.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to the Pest Control Contract and authorize the chairman to sign the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, nothing. Okay, next consideration on amendment, conservation outbuildings removal contract with associated building records to extend length of contract. Robin?
Yes. So back in February of this year, the Conservation Department and I completed a public bid for demolition, a removal of some outbuildings that were left at Lend Mine and Hines Farm Properties. Unfortunately, due to the weather and a restriction from DEP, the contractor was not able to mobilize before March fifteenth, and then was told that they could no longer mobilize after March fifteenth because of the wood turtles and other species to protect them. So at the time, the contract was a hundred eighty-day contract, which would expire in August. So at this time, we are requesting an extension of time to the end of the fiscal year 2022. Straight amendment of time, no cost implications at this time, just so that we can start after November fifteenth, when we're allowed to be back in that area.
Any questions from the board? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve amendment number one to the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts Contract Documents for Sturbridge Conservation Department Outbuilding Removal Project, and authorize the chairman to sign the amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Can I just ask a quick question? It's not, I don't know, Robin might not be yet be able to answer this. But you know the pest management? Do they make sure when they go in and to kill all these various rodents and stuff, that like no animal, I assume they don't do it when school is in session, obviously. But like, do they make sure all the animals are out when they treat the buildings? Do we know?
Yeah, we come every thirty days through, or quarterly, depending on the building. So we, we're reviewing it on a regular basis. But we do, there's, there's nothing left behind. There, we make sure the buildings are secure.
No, I, I know. I'm just wondering, like, with the pest management, does everybody evacuate the building?
Oh, no. It's passive. So we're not, we're not spraying or anything like that. We have some sticky traps. We have-
Oh, okay, I thought you sprayed.
In some places, we have some snap traps. So we're doing it in a, in a least invasive way possible.
Oh, but they just come in with the chemicals and spray with?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
Um, we had to spray the senior center several months ago on the outside of the building. They do a, an environmentally friendly spray for the ants, so that the ants can't come into the food service areas. So that was the only spraying that we've done.
Should come out from my house.
You never know if what they're using is worse than having, but that's all.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Can I, can I add to that? Just-
Sure.
So one of the things that we are also looking at, and I was discussing with Recreation earlier this year, is whether or not the company that we have under contract can do some mosquito or tick spraying in selected areas. So we heard that at town meeting as well as concerned. So we're investigating possibilities at this time.
They're saying ticks are worse this year because of, I don't know, the rain or whatever they were collecting on the leaves. They say that every year, but I did hear that this year, the ticks were particularly bad. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Robin.
Thanks, Robin. Nice to meet you. In person.
Okay, we're up to Q. Consideration and action on appointments and reappearance for boards and committees, term is due to expire in twenty-one. Now, as we normally do, I will read through the list. If you have any questions about anybody, just say "hold" on that name, and at the end, we'll vote for all of them if there's no holes, or answer questions on the holes. Okay, so Animal Control Officer, Roadkill Agent, three-year appointment, Michelle Connors. Assistant Wire Inspector, three-year appointment, William Gibson. Conservation Agent, three-year appointment, Rebecca Gendrow. Conservation Commission, three-year term, five members. Two are up this year. Edward Goodwin, Steven Chidester. Council on Aging, aging, sorry, three-year term. You can have up to nine members. Susan Grandone, Kenneth White, Margaret Darling, Rebecca Mimo, Ken Benson, Annette Roberts, Miri Lawless. Community Preservation Committee, three-year term, seven of nine members. Okay, Penny Dumas. Is she the only one that's up this year?
No, because a lot of the members are appointed by other boards. Like, there's any recommendation, and they, they appoint their slot.
Yeah.
But she was the only one that was up.
Yeah, because there's three at large, which-
I, I will admit that the dates for all these reapointments, there are some gaps in our information, so we're constructing the best ones we know how.
That's happened for years.
Yes, and we are, and Alex and I are determined-
To straighten it.
To straighten it out.
Good. Okay, Design Review Committee, three-year term, five members. Chris Castendike, Amanda Amenden, Richard Volpe. DPW Operations and Maintenance Manager, three-year appointment, Mark Agello. Electrical Inspector, three-year appointment, Robert Garan. Members of the Highway Department, Department of Public Works, three-year appointment, Ben Burlingame, David Lemon, Tegney, Kimberly Wellston-Pulsover, Andrew McDermott. Historical Commission, three-year appointment, Barbara Search, Richard Volpe. Open Space Committee, three-year appointment, Carol Goodwin-Cheer, Lynn Sadi Peterson. Planning Board, five-year term, seven members, Charles Blanchard. Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee, Marsha Rigsby, Walker Pond, Heather Egan, Walker Pond. Sturbridge Tourist Association, three-year term, Thomas Chamberlain, Nicholas Salvador, Sandra Gibson Quigley. Town Council, one-year term, Copman and Page. Traffic Safety Committee, three-year appointment, Earl Desert, Police Chief. Trails Committee, three-year term. Brandon Goodwin, term ends June thirtieth, 2022. Fritz Reeve, term ends June thirtieth, 2024. David Peterkin, term ends June thirtieth, 2023. Darcy Foley, term ends June twentieth, 24. Thomas Chamberlain, associate member, term expires June thirtieth, 2022. David Verdanis, associate member, term expires June thirtieth, 2024. Jeff, how come they have those expiration dates yet? We're-
Right now, they're all expiring now. So Alex worked with Brandon to come up with various dates, so the whole committee doesn't come up at once.
At the same time. Okay. Sounds good. Police Department, three-year appointment, full-time officers, Sean Payne, Scott Crevier, Colby Titula, Paul Jansen, Ronald Obachowski, full-time dispatcher, three-year appointment, Patricia. Luke Pacino, part-time dispatchers, three-years appointment, three-year appointment, Matthew Cole. Fire Department, three-year appointment, full-time personnel, Lieutenant Matthew Rodrick, Lieutenant John Marinelli, Sean Moynah, Jennifer Ash, Matthew Vono, Robert Moynah, James Town. Part-time personnel, three-year appointment, Michael Ash. Okay, any questions? Someone want to make a motion then to approve these appointments or reapointments in some cases?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments of, to all these committees as set forth in Agenda Item Three-Q Appointments, Reappointments for 2021, beginning July first and ending June thirtieth of the year of expiration.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, next we have old business, COVID-19 update. Jeff?
Yes, with the recent actions by the governor and the lifting of restrictions and the cancellation of the state declaration of emergency, staff is recommending that the town cancel its state of emergency, as you can see by the memo from Chief Desert, who serves as our Emergency Management Director.
Okay, anyone have any question on that?
This doesn't change your ability to use any of the emergency funding or anything like that?
No. The CARES Act funds, we have to commit the remainder of those by October and spend what we tell the state we're going to commit by the end of this year. The new funds, which we got 2.8 million, we have several years to spend those. And we, staff is looking at how we can use those, and will bring some recommendations to the board, hopefully in the next few weeks. In addition to revenue support for the budget, there are some other categories that may be beneficial to the community in which to use some of those funds.
What do we have left on the funds from before that need to be committed by October?
About $300,000 out of eight. And really, what we can't get a good grasp on is, because halfway through FEMA said, whatever was FEMA-eligible, we're going to pay seventy-five percent of. And then they said, oh, we're going to pay a hundred percent of. So we're trying to figure out where that extra 25 comes in. But everybody's looking at spending those. A big piece of that 300 will come in the fiber optic project that we, you know, we built fiber optics to all the buildings. Jeremy, the IT coordinator, needs to buy the switches to plug that fiber into. That'll consume a big share of those dollars. And then we're looking at other things like the senior center and cleaning services through the rest of the year, and some other things.
So I look forward to seeing the recommendations. I do want to just reiterate that I'd like at least something in writing about whether you looked at cleaning the air up in the ventilation systems. I know you were going to show me the senior center, but, you know, to me, that would be great if, if, if part of that recommendation, or at least the appropriate people, can look at all the buildings, really, to see how we can improve our ventilation systems.
Well, the-
Cleaner air. Not only, you know, I mean, COVID, absolutely, but even COVID and flu. And I know that a lot of businesses are trying to, this is beyond my expertise, but they're looking at their ways of making sure their air is more, is purified.
Well, the unfortunate thing with this building, these are standalone units. So you can't do a centralized process for air purification. So that's why we bought the portable unit there.
Yeah. Oh, no, I remember suggesting that. Yeah, no, that's good. But I mean, well, I don't know if that's all we can do is lift it that way.
Okay, any other questions or?
So does this mean that the open meeting law goes back to normal? Everybody for the remote-
We're going to talk about that next.
Next.
All right.
Your eyes move quickly. Okay, Jeff?
Uh, just if we could have a motion to lift the emergency-
Oh, okay. Someone want to make a motion then to cancel the emergency declaration for COVID-19?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, five, nothing.
Our remote meeting update. When I wrote this, the legislature, what did I write? I measured. Yeah, okay. So the bottom line is, the most recent action by the legislature allows us to do both, remote meetings and in-person. So it allowed the in, the remote meeting capability of a body to continue for, I think it's at least several months. I have to read the actual document. But you can meet in person if you want. So basically, it allows for hybrid meetings, where the, the board is in the room, or the members of the board who want to be in the room can be in the room. And then other voting members who don't feel comfortable being in the room can be remote. And then you can have the public in the room, you can have the public remote. So it's really up to the boards on how they operate, and individual members of the boards. Without that legislation, a majority of the board members would have to be in the room if the board wanted to allow remote voting. And I think you looked at this shortly before I got here, allowing people, the members of boards, to be remote and still vote. But there are certain provisions that have to be adopted by the boards in the absence of the most recent action of the legislature. So basically, the legislature said you can be remote, you can be public, you can be hybrid for the time being.
Yeah, because I'm trying to think when that first came up, but Sturbridge voted not to accept that, you know?
Right.
When you're on a board, you have an obligation. People understand, you know?
Right.
A meeting here, a meeting there. But, you know, some people get elected to go to Florida for the winter, and, yeah, it's not fair to the board. So we never accepted that provision.
I would encourage most of the boards to meet live. I think all the board members, I think the boards will meet live, but there may be one or two members of each board situationally that have to be remote for whatever reason. I think that's fair. And then open to the public for the meetings.
Yeah, and I, I also feel like at this point, whatever they, I mean, whatever they want, they don't even have to be encouraged, because they may not want to share why they want to stay remote, you know, for health reasons or whatever.
Oh, yeah, no, they don't have to. They just have to.
You know, whatever they want to do.
That's what I have for COVID.
Okay, so. Anyone else have any old business?
Um, yes, I think I do. I think this technically qualifies as old business. Of course, I did not print out my email I wrote to myself about this, so I'm looking at my phone, not because I don't want to look at it, you all, but just because I forgot to. So this is under the, the 241 Sturbridge Road and the, I can't remember the address. The 250, I think 250 Charlton Road, but I'm pulling up the wrong, excuse me. 53 Sturbridge Road and 241 Sturbridge Road in Charlton. The distribution centers issue that we are, basically has been confirmed as Amazon. And we are looking at a combined 6,000 trips per day on Route 20 being added through Sturbridge. And when we were at the Economic Forum last week that I think, I think most of you were at, which was great, traffic was one of the central problems. And what we're going to do by having, introducing this level of heavy truck traffic, I presume 24 hours a day, I don't know, but what would be the point of building such large facilities? One of which is seven stories, I think. To basically use our, I presume use our access point on the turnpike, I believe will also have the added effect of backing up Route 20 well into Brimfield, maybe even a Palmer, blocking, shutting down Route 80 for more, creating even more traffic as we're opening up. All of this occurred, I think, with traffic studies utilizing COVID rates. So it's bad for the region. We are going to end up with all the burden of it. And I think the MEPA comment period ends July 9th. So I think what I would urge the board to do at this point is, I think we need to find authorized legal assistance. I think we need to get a lawyer. I don't think KP Law will actually be able to do it because I think they represent Charlton. Yeah, so they'll be conflicted out. So that's the, the next part. But I think the community, and I know, I have heard pretty much down the line from everybody that I've talked to about this issue, that they are concerned about it. And it doesn't matter if you're in Fisk Hill, Walker Pond, if you're up, down Holland Road, up Brimfield Road, all of it, they're all, this is frankly, even beyond just a traffic issue, it's dangerous. I mean, this is, and will have a chilling, at best, impact on our economy. So I think the board needs to be pretty aggressive about it, particularly with the common period ending. I know Ann Goby and Todd Smolov both been, had a very much an open dialogue with us on it. But I think with their, you know, waiting to see where it goes. So this MEPA is this new round, and I assume it's going to go to MassDOT. And I think that if we don't have all of our information and have all of our ducks in the row right now, we could create real issues. And maybe I'm being Chicken Little on it, but better to proceed as if that is the case because we don't want to end up with something that, right as we're really getting ready, I believe, as a board, to really put some work in on Route 20 to be over before it starts in terms of the impact on our local economy. So that's my diatribe. I think it's technically old business. Yes, I think procedurally, I'm fine.
Oh, we, we forgive you.
Can we, can we comment on that? I just want to say I fully support Jamie Selectperson Goodwin on this. And I don't, and I agree, I mean, KP Law is definitely out. And I'm wondering, do, you know, you're going to entertain some, because I do want legal advice on it as well. So are you prepared to do some kind of a motion? Do we have a recommendation? Who has expertise in this area? Because residents are very concerned with the amount of truck, traffic. And with no exit in Charlton off the Pike, I just see it as one big safety problem for Sturbridge. I mean, I remember when one of the recreational cannabis, how places that they wanted was originally on 20 off of 84 before they decided on the site by Friendly's. And Chief Ford, the then Chief Ford at the time, didn't recommend it at all because he said it's a safety problem, Route 20 is dangerous. And he didn't even want an additional cannabis facility there. And now we're going to have, just over the line, 6,000 trucks a day. So, I mean, I just, I just see this as a big problem for Sturbridge.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree.
Ian?
I think the traffic is concerning, yeah.
Oh, it's very concerning.
Question. I, I agree with the legal representation. Would you also like some traffic analysis? The 2022 budget includes some money in the town administrator's budget for special projects that we may be able to get some, some basic traffic analysis to.
Well, that would.
Bolster the case.
That would certainly be helpful.
Okay. We have a traffic engineer that works a lot with the planning board, that may be somewhat familiar with the project and the route already, that may be able to provide some comment that can beef up whatever we can find an attorney.
Okay, do you want to motion then to both effects?
Yeah, find an attorney and authorize, you know.
Yeah, I mean, just on a couple of quick notes if I can now. So I think it's going to be hard with the municipal groups because I think a lot of them are going to feel on, a lot of the traditional municipal attorneys, I know, you know, Amazon is pretty, it has a lot of buying and it is awkward for them. So I think that's one consideration. And the other part is whoever probably was counsel, if want, whatever the trap, just make sure we coordinate what we're doing. Left hand and the right hand, that's only. But I would, I guess, so we're moving to find track, I mean, the, do we want to name the firm now or do we want to try to figure that out or are we just going to keep it broad?
No, we could figure that out later.
Okay, so I, I would move to obtain representation to analyze and advise the town of Sturbridge in connection to the, let me get the actual. The developments in Charlton at 241 Sturbridge Road and at 53 Sturbridge Road. As, as soon as possible, because the initial MEPA comments are due July 9th.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Question, just for clarification. Does that include authorization to spend some money out of the town administrator's special projects fund for traffic engineering?
Yeah, I was going to do that as a separate motion.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just figured it makes sense to.
Six one, Anthony. Okay, all in favor of that motion? Okay, five to nothing, so second motion?
I would hereby move that the town, the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to utilize his special project funds to engage in a traffic study.
Or get some traffic engineering.
Or get a traffic engineer, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, Mary, do you have any old business?
No, I, well, I already raised it, but we talked about it. I, I want some ideas from, what, what are we going to do with OSB? Because now we're already up to June and we're halfway through. But it would be nice and I, if we did something in conjunction with them to commemorate it. And so maybe even if, I know you've been working, I guess Terry's been working with Chris Tieri, but even if we had some ideas of the progress, what kind of meetings they're having, what ideas are being, you know, considered, that type of thing. Because at this point, I think we'll have to do something in the fall.
Yeah, I think that's when they're planning a lot.
It's kind of their big time of year anyway, right?
Yeah. We're working on their clock.
Yeah.
So.
I get it.
So I imagine they're a little delayed because, you know, the first half of the year was probably fairly screwed up for them.
Well, I think they're trying to get their footing and trying to understand what their season looks like. The governor's lifting of the restrictions was sooner than most anticipated. So everybody's trying to kind of figure out where they are. But they have also been working with this Sturbridge Tourist Association on different elements of their yearly marketing and event schedule, so.
Nice. I mean, I don't know, like a parade or something.
Understood.
Let them organize that.
Oh, I get it, but we do have a tourist coordinator now, so.
Oh, yeah, but do you remember the 250th parade? The organization that took?
Oh, I, I agree, but that's what I'm saying is, and we are.
Before your time, Jamie.
Ah, it's probably a lot.
Crawling around.
I, I don't know, yeah. That was my only old business.
Okay, Chase, old business?
Old business, I wanted to just give an update. Me and the town administrator had a meeting at Burgess with Kathy Pelley and Paul Garen about their fields and what we can do to approve. And then we got a lot of irons in the fire here about moving forward and getting them some help. So I just wanted to give the public a little update that we are working on cleaning up our fields.
At Burgess?
At Burgess, yeah.
That storm damage that took out the bench and dugout on that one side?
Yeah.
I don't see why Ian can't go over.
Climb over the fence, do a little bit of that, yeah.
Minimum weight, Ian.
It's better than this.
Okay, thanks, Chase. Ian, any old business?
I have no old, no.
No, and I have no old. New business, Keno monitor installation at Fred's Variety.
We got this letter, I'm still trying to get some more information on it, but the 21-day timeframe starts on June 15th, I did get clarification of that. So this is just for your information this evening. I imagine if you do want to have a letter, you can do it at your June 6th meeting if there's any concern. It's just, you can watch the Keno game in the building. They already authorized the cell Keno.
Right.
So it's just watching the game.
Because that authorization comes from the state.
Yeah.
We didn't have any say.
Did we already do, we did all our old business?
Yeah.
Okay, can I just ask one today? Maybe we can, I just, and I can email Nelson myself too, but out of curiosity, it seems that, is it the, an extra, I don't know if it's the extra mark, what, they're calling it Lucky Mark. It's a former extra mark. It, that seems to be at a standstill.
Yes.
And I just wondered what the, what the problem was.
They started it without permits. And then when they got into it, bad soil, other issues. So they're working through conservation, they're working through their permit process now.
It's been like that for a long time. I, I knew about the permits, but I didn't know if they made any more progress, but.
But they have all those extra signs up.
I just had one comment on the Keno monitor. I'm in and out of a lot of stores on a daily basis, and I will say that if we're going to do this, it should be noted and reminded of them that they are an off-premise alcohol location. Because you do see a lot of people hanging around in the stores when you include these monitors and watching the play. And you can buy alcohol in these locations, so. I'm not going to say that people are standing around drinking in other locations, but it does happen.
We could pull their license.
I just think it's worth reminding them when they get the screen that, hey, you are an off-premise account.
Don't put any chairs on.
Yes, exactly, yep.
Is that happening in the city and like?
I will not comment on if that's going to happen. I'd just say that I think it'd be worth, you know, just letting them know, hey, your permit still stands the same and.
That's right.
Bear in mind, yep.
Very good point.
Hasn't changed. Okay, so approval of. Oh, no, we have new business, the packet Jeff gave us earlier. Some additions came in. First one is Russ Chamberlain's retirement from the planning board. Tomorrow night's his last meeting. And there will be a recognition event after the meeting, and the board is certainly invited to attend. And their meetings go pretty.
Yeah, according to Jean, that meeting won't last more than an hour?
Right, it'll be probably their longest. They've had some 10-minute meetings and. Maybe we ought to get their chair over.
I know, he's lazy, that's what it is, I think.
Okay, and Steve Hultman is retiring from the Conservation Commission effective July 21st, 2021. We have his letter of resignation. Also Officer Jeff Lavalley is retiring from the Sturbridge Police Department effective July 1st, 2021, but he has requested to possibly come back as a part-time officer. And Jeff, you said you and the chief would be discussing.
Yeah, the chief would like to discuss that with you on July 19th when he's available to discuss. He won't be available on the 6th.
Okay. And then additional help for the Building Department. We would like to have William LaPage be available to help Nelson Burlingame or the department over the next several weeks. Mr. LaPage is a certified inspector. He most recently worked for the town of Dudley. We will be processing the application and he would be an employee for the purposes of liability and workers' compensation insurance, but he would be used on an as-needed basis. Okay, and the purchase of Fisk Hill Road.
Can I, and I don't mean to interrupt.
No, that's.
On that one, can I get a motion to authorize or confirm the appointment of Mr. LaPage on an ad needed basis for the Building Department? This came up today. Mr. Burlingame is still in and out of the office for various reasons, but he's saying this gentleman will be in a position to help him.
Okay, is there a motion then?
Can I ask a question? Just so in his appointment, is he a contractor in Dudley now? What is he, what's his background?
He retired, he's moving to Florida in a month or so, but he is available for the time being to, to assist our department.
Okay, makes sense.
And he says he's doing it for free, but I would ask that you authorize up to the same amount that Mr. White was making in the event there is compensation requested.
Do we have a motion then?
So moved.
That's good.
Okay, all I have to do is fill in the words.
That's it. Alex has it down.
Have they, I know there was a problem with a backlog of permits, have they been able to dwindle that down and?
It's, we're caught up.
Yep.
So. Between Mr. White and the state inspector, they, they caught up on all that.
Okay, is there?
And how many hours will he be volunteering and or working?
It depends on Mr. Burlingame's need.
Okay, so there's no range?
No.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five zero. Okay, purchase of Fisk Hill Road and Old Farm Road, Jeff?
Yes, we've been processing the results of the town meeting. The town meeting said that we would like to buy the property and we put KP Law in connection with the seller's attorney. And they are working on the documents. The question our attorney has is, do we need to do any investigations on the property before, before we take possession? That's a question. We also need the board, and I apologize for this coming out today. This is when, this happened late last week when I got the documents. But the board needs to adopt the notice of intent to exercise the option pursuant to GL Chapter 61, Section 8, and the purchase and sale agreement, which is identical to the purchase and sale agreement the seller had with the private buyer. And those are necessary to be filed. And then we can proceed with the closing of the property.
Questions? Someone want to make that long motion there?
I will make the long motion there. I hereby move that pursuant to the authority granted by the vote taken under Article 49 of the June 7th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting to exercise the town's right of first refusal and purchase for consideration of $155,000 and for recreational purposes, the properties located at 48 Old Farm Road, 133 Fisk Hill Road, 137 Fisk Hill Road, and 139 Fisk Hill Road, which are classified under GLC 61, and to execute and to authorize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to execute on behalf of the board the notice of exercise, the purchase and sale agreement, and any and all acceptances, affidavits, and other documents necessary are appropriate to accomplish the foregoing.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Did we vote to accept the resignations of the?
I can have those next time, I just wanted you to have them.
Have them.
Oh, okay, yeah. You can, you can if you want.
Oh, okay, oh, so we're not accepting Steve Hultman effective July 21st or, that's for next?
It can, it can be or you can't.
Okay, I, I just didn't know.
Also, that retirement's coming up before we have another meeting for the Police Department July 1st, so should we do that before?
Sure.
Yeah, because we had already accepted Russell's from before.
Right, we, not Steve.
But we get the meeting on the.
Oh, I don't care either way, I just.
Mr. Lavalley should be perhaps.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to approve the retirement of Officer Jeff Lavalley from the Sturbridge Police Department and thank him for his many years of service?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Wish him well, he's watching.
Getting back to Fisk Hill. Getting back to Fisk Hill, we're not seeking special investigations on the property?
See any reason to, just spending more money? Do we know it's there?
Right, plus there was nothing really.
I don't know it very well, so.
Yeah, I've been there. You know, there wasn't a factory or a truck stop or.
A tannery, maybe?
Tannery.
No tannery?
No. There was a gun shop close by, but.
Lead. We're going for lead.
Pistol pond. Do you know what pistol pond is?
Pistol pond? Nope.
So they just shot it?
20, it's where, what's that motel, Comfort Inn? That's pistol pond.
Okay.
It was a Gibson Tiffany gun factory there.
Cool.
Before my time, but it was.
Robin has a question in the back.
Robin? Did any of the building lots have previous residential buildings that they have demolished?
Nope.
So no oil tanks or anything, so?
It's been trees and that's what.
Trees and ledge.
And on top of that.
Weird, on Sturbridge.
Okay, so.
Good, thank you.
Okay, correspondence. Chase?
Yes. All right, May 11, 2021, Southbridge Landfill, B, WPSW, 45, permit approval. Documents from James A. McQuade, Section Chief, Solid Waste Management Program, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, to Jeff Bridges and Mary Blanchard. May 14, 2021, Charter Communications, upcoming changes. Letter from John Maher, Director of Government Affairs, to Jeff Bridges. May 21, 2021, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission Advisory regarding the end of COVID-related restrictions. Email from Ryan Melville, Deputy Executive Director, Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, to Jeff Bridges. May 25, 2021, KP Law PC E-update, current issue regarding alcohol licensing. Email and E-update from KP Law to Jeff Bridges. June 1, 2021, The Dirt, News from the Garden, newsletter from Community Food Collaborative, to Jeff Bridges. June 7, 2021, Charter Communications, upcoming changes. Letter from John Maher, Director of Governmental Affairs, to Jeff Bridges. June 14, 2021, Charter Communications, broadband expansion. Letter from John Maher, Director of Government Affairs, to Jeff Bridges. June 16, 2021, Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Advisory regarding the expansion of patio service and takeaway delivery of alcohol by on-premises licensees. Advisory from Ryan Melville, Deputy Executive Director of the Massachusetts AVCC, to Jeff Bridges.
Okay, now that one is dated after the one from KP Law. And it changed a little.
It's been changing, yeah.
Constant. We will, I assume, get from planning a list of the restaurants that will be.
Yes.
Because we do have to approve them.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else have any correspondence?
I just had a question about, about the outdoor patio dining. Is it possible for us to make one motion and allow the restaurants in town to operate outdoor dining without everybody having to apply for a permit like that individually? Could we?
Well, they don't really apply, apply.
It's just letting us know.
Well, planning talks to them because there's certain things we have to check.
Yep.
You know?
Okay.
And then like last year, we just got a whole list of what they, what restaurants there were.
Yeah, I remember the tents.
And any guidelines that had to been given.
I'm just thinking, make it easy on them as possible.
Yeah, but you can't just give carte blanche.
No.
Or people just set up with, with no tents, with no railings.
No protection from traffic. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Sell the drinks to people walking by.
Yeah, P G's expanse of the gas station.
General Alex will do that across the street.
Okay, approval of minutes. May 17. Does anybody have any corrections, additions?
I have just one word, a change. On page 329, midway through the second paragraph, Vice Chair Dowling asked, based on the policy, what percentage of the budget is given? Alex, cross out given and put free cash. And that's the only change I have.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, motion to approve has ended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, minutes of June 7. Any addition? There's only 10 minutes. Motion to approve is written then?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, Citizens Forum?
No one's here.
No one's here. Called in. Okay, next on agenda, we have a request for executive session. Chase, you want to read it?
Yep.
Please?
Yep, executive session, tender executive session under MGLC 30A, Section 21, Paragraph 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence disease of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Chase's motion.
How do you vote, Jamie?
In favor.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
And you will not be rejoining the regulation.
And we will not be reconvening and over the session.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to end the meeting, the remote meeting, and turn off the recordings.